Like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Hatch and Councilman Adams asked to be excused tonight. Invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Clark and I'll leave it to the pledge if you all like to stand and join us, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity to gather as the City Council for the city of Sholo. We're grateful for the circumstances in which we are able to meet in this wonderful building with having celebrated the birth of thy son Jesus Christ and welcoming in a new year. We're grateful for the opportunity that presents for us as a council and then for us as a community. We ask that thy spirit will be with us tonight as we deliberate that we'll be able to think and ponder and discuss openly the matters before us that we'll be able to be able to put the needs of the citizens first and be able to work in a collaborative way to do what's best for our community. We are grateful for our men and women in uniform. We pray that thou watch over them and protect them and help them to get home safely to their families this evening. We pray in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Appreciate that. Welcome back. Seems like we've been gone for a while, huh? Hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and I hope and pray we all have a happy next year. So I hope everybody enjoyed the time off and the snow that we did have. It was it was nice, but it's a little cold with no no snow. I don't mind cold, but I like snow if it's gonna be cold. Next time on the agenda is called to the public, any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Seeing nobody move, we'll move right along to the consent calendar, sorry. Is there any items on the consent calendar need to be removed? The items will be considered as proclamation by the mayor proclaiming January 17th, 2022 as Martin Luther King Day. Consideration acceptance of metal trail parking lot expansion. Consideration of resolution number R zero twenty-two dash oh one, abandoning unnecessary public right of ways. Consideration of approval subscription agreement with Arizona apartment emergency and military affairs. Excuse me. Consideration of purchase of records communication server system and consideration amendments of the Sholo City Council meeting. Before I entertain a motion, I'll ask the city clerk to read the proclamation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was born on January 15th, 1929, dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means. And whereas in 1983, the United States Congress recognized Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders by adopting the third Monday in January, the month of his birth, as a federal holiday, and in 1994 designated this holiday as a national day in service. And whereas the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service is observed as a day on, not a day off, to devote to service projects that strengthen communities, empower individuals, bridge barriers, and create solutions to social problems. And whereas the city of Sholo, sorry, whereas the Sholo City Council and the city of Sholo value and encourage community service and will honor Dr. King's teachings by designating a day in April 2022 to devote to one or more projects that will benefit the entire community. Now therefore, John Leach Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the Sholo City Council, does hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in the city of Sholo and encourages citizens to volunteer their time and participate with city employees in a service project on Saturday, April 30th, that will strengthen and enhance this community.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Now I entertain a motion to consent calendar is read.
To accept the consent calendar and approve it.
You got a motion? I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those both same sign, motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Consideration of an award construction contract for Park Plaza subdivision sewer replacement, city of Sholo project number S zero eight two two. Mr. Hamsaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city's fiscal year 2022 capital improvement plan budget includes $290,000 for a sewer line replacement project labeled Park Plaza Sewer Line Replacement Project. The existing wastewater collection system consists of aging six inch clay pipe is requiring more and more maintenance and repairs. Scope of the work include installing approximately 1,600 linear feet of new eight inch PVC sewer main, six new concrete manholes, new sewer services, and replacing the asphalt that is removed. The project was designed by Painted Sky Engineering with a construction estimate of $315,000. EDQ approvals to construct have been obtained. The project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements with following results. Apache Underground and Excavating at $278,304.50 and Raleigh Specialty Contracting at $303,840.0. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the Park Plaza subdivision sewer replacement city of Sholo project S zero eight two two to Apache Underground and Excavating in that amount not to exceed $278,304.50. The bid tabulation for the work is attached and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Or motions?
I'll move to award the construction contract for the Park Plaza subdivision sewer replacement, city of Sholo project number S dash zero eight two two to Apache Underground and Excavating in an amount not to exceed $278,304.50.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion, second by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign, motion passed. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a letter of support for Navajo County Middle Mile Broadband Network. Mr. Mooter.
Navajo County intends to pursue funding through the Arizona Broadband Development Grant Program for a countywide middle mile fiber optic network. The funding would support a countywide fiber project that would assist Navajo County's communities, including providing affordable, reliable, high-speed internet connectivity for residents, public safety communications, local industry, healthcare providers, and small and medium businesses. This investment will assist in providing access to essential services for residents, including telemedicine, remote work, and distance learning. It will also support the growth of our local economy, allowing communities to continue to attract and retain businesses and a workforce that will thrive in the digital economy. Navajo County has asked that all six incorporated communities in the county sign a letter of support for the grant application. We have Mr. Glenn Kephardt and Supervisor Seymour and other county officials here tonight for further explanation and any questions that you may have.
Which one do you want to come up? Give us a little.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members and staff. We appreciate it. Thankful for having us here tonight. This is just a project that we feel is very important for community for Navajo County as we are able to build in some redundancy into the broadband system that we have. It's also to build out an area that will enhance many of our communities workers with the broadband that's necessary to enhance our community. It's something that there's a lot of monies that are going to be on in play and we just feel that if we can start with this grant, start working together and have the support of the communities, there will be something that not only was this an item that became a very focused item prior to COVID, it has become more evident during COVID of just how important the broadband is in our area and the lack of the broadband that we need to bring it up to an improved state so that each and every home someday possibly could have better service. So with that, we just encourage you to continue and I'm gonna let our county manager share a little bit of insight if you'd like to as well. Appreciate the work.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And just to put it in perspective, last last spring, we we are early to early in this year, we contracted with Magellan Advisors to take a look at our broadband needs. At that time, we thought even if the funding were available, I'm not sure what we would do with it. So they did a comprehensive study and a and a plan of the entire county to assess what we have, what's planned to be built, and what needs to be built. The timing on that was pretty, pretty good because they completed the strategic plan this fall and the one of the number one things that they identified that we need to have in the county is an open access middle mile broadband network. And that open access would go from from Holbrook through Snowflake and Taylor to Sholo with a with a lineup to In Top Lakeside and out to Heber Over Guard and then that would fiber and then a wireless connection back to Winslow. So you get a complete loop that creates redundancy. So if we get cut somewhere, it can come in from the other direction, which is the couple of the things that they said that we needed was the open access. So the intent would be that this would be built and it would be open access to everybody. It won't be owned by any provider. It may be owned by the county or there would be agreements that would assure that it is is open access to the all intercept inter service providers. As part of the Arizona Commerce Authority Grant Application, it requires that we partner with a private sector partner. We currently have an RFP out on the street and those RFPs are due in next next week. And then we'll go through a process to review them. So we're hoping that local providers or whoever it may be will come to the table, help us build this and also expand the project to start to begin a connection of the last mile service off of the off of the new fiber network. It's estimated that the project will cost about $17 million and the broadband grant has a max of $10 million for project. We're hoping we'll find some partners that will come to the table. And I know that the Board of Supervisors had previously indicated that investing in broadband is very high on their priority and high on our priority to use a significant portion of our ARPA dollars to do that. So what we're requesting, we're trying to put together the best application package that we can. And we've gotten special thanks to Rochelle Tapa and Ken Mariama who are really the team working to put this together, make sure that we put forth an application that hopefully the Arizona Commerce Commission can't say no to. And part of that is unity of our towns and cities. Through this whole process of the developing the strategic plan and special thank you to to your city manager Mooter and his team because they helped provide the information local to Sholo that they needed to understand the infrastructure that we have in place or anything is being planned to be built. But if we can show unity among all cities with all mayors signing one letter, that sends a strong message. We're also looking for letters of support from our public safety community, Summit Hospital, Navajo Northland Pioneer College, our business community probably through Real AZ. And we believe we can get a joint letter from President Nez and Chairwoman Gwendyia Gaywood. Put all that together, that's a package that may be hard to say no to and that's our intent. So we really appreciate your consideration of this matter and hope that you would offer us your support.
When they did the survey or whatever they did, what kind of dollar figures did they come up with to run this broadband?
Well, the run of the broadband will be part of what we'll get from the RFP. It should be a net positive. It shouldn't be a negative to the public sector because it's tremendous asset. Like I said, the cost to build the infrastructure is about 17 million. We're hoping through agreements that as service providers who will want to access that and then provide the service to the homes and to the businesses and to the schools and the public safety will economic should work. It's working in other places in the country, but I don't know exactly what that looks like.
Seventeen million doesn't seems like, I mean, that's a lot of money, obviously, but you would think it'd be so much more to to run something like this.
It will. It will be to build out. That's where the the service providers come in. So so we get the middle backbone. There's a lot more needs to be done. There needs to be a connection on I-40 for a back haul and a connection down Phoenix. There's only a few places where the internet really resides and comes from. Phoenix, Albuquerque, is it Denver, Denver, and in Texas? Is it Dallas? San Antonio? But there's major hubs and everything's coming out of there. So we have additional connections that need to need to happen, but there are some projects that are making significant progress on that. I know that Arizona Commerce Authority is looking at future grants later this year. They haven't been released yet. And I know one of their priorities is to get the back haul built along I-40, which will be a significant improvement. The other thing that this project does and the reason we can get that our tribal partners, North and South, are interested, it creates a redundancy because this this service connects to the north and it connects to the south. There's connections needed to Apache County to be a next phase. There's a lot more to build, but this is a start.
I think too, one of the things with Magellan, we went out and got Magellan to start doing our work early on and then the state actually joined with Magellan and chose them to do the state study as well. So we were kind of a little bit on the right path ahead and was able to join in with them. Right now, the state has issued a will be doing $100 million to control areas for broadband. So it gets, that's all part of the picture that goes in APS, the monies that they're going to be spending to run their wiring down I-40 and those areas will all be tied in and those dollars aren't. So by time this gets put together, you're multi-million dollars, hopefully a whole new infrastructure in the state as well.
Vice Mayor.
I just would like to comment that I appreciate the county taking the lead on this. It's been a project that's been important to our White Mountain area for a long period of time and a number of different partners have kind of taken up the sword at certain times. And so it's really wonderful to see all of this coming together in a unified project like this. And I think it's critical to public safety, to telehealth in all those different important economic development issues that we face with second homes and everything that COVID presented for us as a challenge. So thank you for all the work that you've started and I for my part, I look forward to working with you on this and seeing it to fruition.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I hear you got a really kick butt grant writer you hired.
Yeah.
Worked with him very thorough, very detailed. No, I think this is great. I'm all for getting better broadband up here and I like the fact that there's a grant that'll cover it and possibly more grants that will cover some of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
You know, I'm totally the opposite. I apologize, but you know, I just seen where government came in and took control of the paper mill and we lost a lot of jobs in in paper mill. And we're also seeing now on the coal side of it. And now private enterprise has done a lot of interaction and put in a lot of different fibers throughout this year. When they lost a paper mill, they lost a lot of people with union jobs that paid a lot of wages and stuff in town and also with the power companies. Also with this, you know, I guess one question I'd like to have you answer is, are the people that could lose their jobs in the private sector with this fiber optics coming in because of their company putting in so much fiber optics and then maybe trying to take this, are you gonna be able to replace them with union jobs with union pay or you're just gonna be, you know, 1450 whopping hamburger type of pay? Those are the type of things I think a lot of people are looking at. Am I gonna lose my job because of paper mill? My dad, my grandfather, my brother, my sister lost jobs in there and the power company's the same way. When you talk about redundancy, redundancy we can do in here, but what if they cut a fiber at in Denver? You're still you're still locked up. No matter what if no matter what kind of ring you have up here. They cut in Palo Alto, California. The car goes out in Palo Alto, California. The redundancy is still bad. I've had people from Scottsdale, Chandler, Buckeye come up here and visit us and go, man, you guys' internet up here is a lot better than anything that we have down in the rural in the metro area. And I know right now that they're putting millions and millions of dollars in fiber to the home and on the Navajo Nation right now. So there's a lot of private industries that have a lot of fiber out there that is providing a lot of this stuff. And a lot of them are thinking by reading in the newspaper and seeing what's going on, how many are we gonna, how many jobs are we gonna lose by the government taking over this again? And, you know, you have to look at that because we've it happened. It's already happened. So there's so many variables that can happen with with fiber optics, no matter if you have a redundancy ring, that's where all the hubs, where everything goes down. If that hub goes down, your ring can be 15 fibers in that ring and still you're not gonna be able, you're just gonna have inner stuff in inner. So, you know, I, the letter I read from the from the mayor of Winslow, I agreed with some of it and strongly disagreed with some of it. I think I think his letter was put out to try to tell people that we are really don't have anything up here and we do have stuff up here. Some of it, people have to pay a little bit more for than what, you know, I'm not sure, like you said, the 17 million to build the fiber from Holbrook down, that you're 100% right, it's probably gonna be that. But to get it to go into the office and multiplex it out and and change the light wave into the voice wave and to get all that stuff done is gonna be a bunch of millions on top of that. Plus, and if you talk about going residence and commercials and buildings, you still have to have manpower to go out there and fix it, put it together and do things like that. So now you're gonna have to add more people onto that. So now you're looking at more people could be losing their job. You know, we've had a college come to us and say, we can't get this fiber to work. And then within 10 minutes, we've had the fiber up and working. So having skilled people doing it and high paid people doing it, that's what, you know, there's a lot of us out there that that want to keep our jobs and keep things going and are concerned about their jobs. So that's one reason I'm kind of against it. It's not because I don't want to see everything get bigger. I just don't want to see government to take it over. I'm much rather see private enterprises take it over.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor, if I may respond, just as a clarification, I appreciate the points and the insight that you have on this. I just want to clarify that there's no intent for Navajo County to take over any internet business. What we're trying to do is assist with public funds and a lot of federal funds actually coming through the Arizona Commerce Authority and then funds that come to the county through federal government to build the open access that and then it's up to the private sector to tap into that. Like they use our roadway system from an arterial roadway system, the local roads are built in a different way and run in a different way. That's kind of the model here. We know, there's no way I'm gonna recommend our supervisors that we get into the providing internet service. I don't think that's that's our role nor is that our recommendation nor does it is isn't the intent of this. It's to build something that is being recommended to us that it needs to be built. And then I'm really optimistic and hopeful about the RFP that we have out in the street, see what kind of partnership opportunities we have come to the table. But we don't intend for this middle mile to ever be exclusive to anybody. So so it becomes open to the marketplace and hopefully that that has a positive effect on the area. So just to clarify, we don't intend to.
And I greatly appreciate that. I just, the perception of reading what is in the newspaper today and then what this here is, it the perception is out there that that could happen. And so after seeing all the other things that has happened, you can see where the perception's coming from. You know, and so and I think as, you know, as what we need to do as a city council is make sure that we don't lose any of that or people, you know, and things that are in our control, we can handle the things out of our control, like any of the government stuff, there's no way we can handle it except for by voicing our opinion, you know. And I know I voiced my opinion at Hollerin's office and talked to him about internet and about how we need to get it up here. And so it, I know what we have to do. I just, I just want to understand that we need to protect people's jobs. We need to protect the way that they, we don't want to lose another paper mill and another power plant and also a lot of, you know, because now you got, you got a lot of Navapatch with IBW and you got Frontier and you got all these other ones with CWA. That's got a lot of union members into it. And you, there's a lot of good wages there that we could lose. So the perception is we just don't want to lose that.
I don't think that the intent is to lose any of the existing jobs. It's also to help with commerce that we will add, add higher tech jobs and jobs that are not currently in our area that can be developed as well, that we become an even playing field with the valley with some of the tech companies. When you start looking, they're putting, you know, data centers in billions of billions of dollars. Those people, if they could work remotely here in Sholo for a business that's in Phoenix and they have the broadband with to do that, they're going to now bring a hundred $150,000 paying job and they're gonna choose to live in Sholo or choose to live in Snowflake or Pintup because they like rural community, but they have access to work. And I think that's what we're seeing and that's what we're hoping to do.
Well, you know, and I totally agree with you Supervisor, because there is a lot of fiber to the home already in Sholo, in the Sholo area. And we seen a big usage of internet when COVID-19. Now, a lot of it was between five o'clock and in the evening to five o'clock in the morning. So I know the kids aren't doing their homework. They're playing a little something, but I mean, that's when the usage really spiked up. So it just, you know, even on the Navajo Nation, it's fiber to the home now. And here there's gonna be a lot more subdivision with fiber to the home. That's what it's all going to. Even the old subdivisions that we have in in our neighborhood right now, even the city managers is gonna probably be fiber to the home eventually. He might be gone by then, but it could be fiber to the home. But, you know, it just, I understand where you're coming from. I just want to protect. Okay. And that's and that's the main thing is to protect.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Clark, do you have anything you want to say, Mayor? Nope, I already did.
Okay. I appreciate what Councilmen also said because I think it's very valid points. We don't want to lose good paying jobs up here in Navajo County. Having been a, I have a direct correlation with Abbottibby Stone Container closing down. My uncle, he was born and raised in Snowflake. They closed it down in the early 90s. He had to move to Mississippi. You know, him and his wife are both natives of Snowflake and he simply, he recently retired last year from the company that hired him on, but he wasn't able to raise his family and, you know, in his home community and stuff like that. One of the reasons I wanted to get on the council was I was worried about some of the economic downturns that are happening in our region. We, we can't turn a blind eye to what's happening at Choya Power Plant and with EPA. And I've, I was worried about the loss of those jobs. And I was actually talking to to our city attorney and our city manager about when I ran, decided to get on the council, I wanted to figure out how we could replace those jobs. Like what are we doing economically wise to bring those types of jobs here? And I think that, you know, we we look at COVID-19 and all the horrors that have happened, but there is a silver lining. The silver lining is that we can now have remote opportunities for, you know, like Supervisor Seymour said, that we can provide these jobs, these very good, high paying jobs. One of the, my biggest fear is that my kids won't be able to live in the community they were raised in because they're going to have to move out and go find a job. And, and I was thinking, how are we gonna get the resources, right? Like we had talked about various businesses and there's, I think the last project that was almost a viable project, they were gonna relocate their manufacturing plant to Navajo County. This was a few years ago. It was several hundred million dollars of infrastructure and trying to locate by the rail and trying to do all that. And so as an investment for us to be able to write a letter and then be able to, you know, advocate for this $17 million that the government would be able to participate in, I think it's a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very wise investment. And I think that it's gonna do the opposite of Councilman also. I think it's gonna create even better, higher paying jobs because I think that in order to maintain this this network that will be created, we're gonna need more people. I have a brother who works for one of the local service providers and he said that they are having such a hard time right now trying to find people and they're, they're paying very well for entry level positions where they can then gain, they're able to gain experience, they're able to get certifications that the company will pay for, and they're able to really build themselves up. And he said they just can't find the workforce, right? The educated workforce who's gonna be able to do that. And so I'm very optimistic that doing this middle mile and being able to participate in that, I think that this is gonna lay the foundation, like Supervisor Seymour said, you know, we're gonna, these are gonna be the roads and then the our service providers who already have that in place, they're gonna be able to piggyback off of that. And it's gonna create greater opportunity and economic growth. And, and like, you know, Vice Mayor said, she works at the hospital. One of the the biggest moves in in medicine right now is to telemedicine and this is an intricate part of that. And then I know we've talked about law- And then I know we've talked about law enforcement and the need for, you know, a more robust system with our, our 911 system and, and regional dispatch and some of those discussions. And so I have, I, I share your exact same concerns. My, you know, I, I remember when I was 21, my, I got, I got hired on at, at Abitibi, and I turned the job down, and my mom thought I was nuts, right? I went, came home and I was like, I was offered a job at Abitibi today, I don't even know what they were called, and my mom was like, she was excited because my dad, for years, tried to get on at the, the paper mill, and he, for whatever reason, he just couldn't get on. And, and then when I told her, I was like, I, I turned it down, I want to go to college, and she was like, what? Like, go back and tell them you'll take it. Like, your dad tried for decades to get on there, and I just felt like it wasn't the right move for my wife, and I, you know, hindsight now, looking back, I'm glad that I did that, it's worked out for us, but I, I, I really think this is the opportunity for us to really change the dynamics of the economic future for, for the Sholo area, for the White Mountains, and for Navajo County. And with that, I, are you looking for a motion, Mayor?
Sure.
All right. I will move to approve, move to submit a letter of support for the Navajo County Middle Mile Broadband Network, and thank Supervisor Seymour for his leadership, Mr. Kepheart, Rochelle, and Ken. I know that you guys have taken the, the bull by the horns with this, I've seen it, and the, the other aspect, you know, Vice Mayor Kukavas spoke about this, and she said, you know, this has been out there for a while. I've, I've heard about broadband probably four or five years ago, and it was multiple entities trying to do it, and nothing has really ever came to fruition. We have great service providers in the area. I, I agree with you, we have some, some awesome service providers who've done a lot of work and resources, and they've, they've really put themselves out there in the community. I know that all of the, the local representation that we have, like on the chamber board and on, they donate to our communities and stuff, and it's phenomenal, but I really appreciate the, the leadership of your team and, and what the, what you guys have been able to do in getting us to this point.
Second by the Vice Mayor, she's whispering in my ear, I think she's elbowing me.
She's like, tell Brett to shut up.
I got a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed four to one.
Thank you for your time.
Also, my other hat, you know, that I wear for being chairman of NACOG, I'm sure we can make a, get another letter out that way too, if you need, if you need one from NACOG.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming tonight. All righty, next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Vice Mayor, anything over there?
Well, just wish everybody a happy new year. Welcome back. Just very hopeful that you all have a happy, healthy 2022.
Yes. The Sholo Chamber of Commerce is starting their morning breakfast. Tomorrow's the first one. It starts at seven thirty to nine. If you have, if a, a member of the chamber would like to attend those, please reach out to Courtney Payne at the Sholo Chamber, she'll get you that information, but those are our monthly networking breakfasts that they're starting back up, so we're excited about that.
Where's that one?
Uh, Sultana.
I just want to say happy new year, just like the Vice Mayor, and, and I hope that 2022 is a lot better year than the last couple, so.
And the sad thing is, I think we were sitting here last year saying that exact same thing, and we did it again, so let's hope 22's got to be better. Councilman Alsop.
No, I just want to wish everybody a happy new year and everything will go okay. Just want to let everybody know, you know, hey, if you want, if you're sitting at home and you don't have nothing going on, Sholo Sports has got a lot of stuff going on at Sholo, at, at high school and stuff like that and junior high, so step out and watch some basketball games, volleyball games, some wrestling, and just get out and support your local schools. That's it.
Thanks, sir. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. For anyone interested, candidate packets for, if you're interested in running for a seat on city council are available beginning tomorrow. The necessary paperwork must be filed between Monday, March 7th and Monday, April 4th. The primary election will be held August 2nd, and if you're interested, you need to schedule an appointment with the city clerk's office at 5324061. There are three seats up in, in this round of elections, so. We're all, staff's beginning the process to prepare for the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2023, in addition to the budget study session with the city council on Tuesday, January 18th at 6:00 PM. We'll be hosting a town hall meeting, budget meeting specifically for citizen input the following Thursday on January 20th at 6:00 PM. All the budget meetings will be held here in the council chambers and are open to the public, and if you check our city's website for the public that they're interested, we have a list of all the meeting dates of the budget meetings on that website. Anyone wishing to recycle a Christmas tree has until Sunday, January 9th, drop it off with all the lights and decorations removed at Frontier Park Parking Lot. One, after the trees are dropped off there, they'll be taken to Noble Power in Snowflake to be used as biomass fuel. And we have quite a few public works projects going on. Construction's been completed on the metal parking lot expansion and the Sholo Metal. We continue to work, and the contractor continues to work on the city campus parking lot. The city, there's a contract that's getting ready to build, replace the sewer lines in McNeil, Fourth to Eighth Avenue and, and the Days Inn area, and also on First Drive, McNeil Waterline, a waterline project scheduled to begin. We have a lot of projects getting ready to start now, and there's quite a few more in the future, so we just want to thank all our citizens and appreciate the patience that they give us as we complete these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take seconds real quick. I always forget, and I think we probably did before our last meeting, but thank the guys at Public Works for the, the lighting that they did and also the contractor. Nothing but compliments about our, our lightings from anywhere, from all over the, the mountain. People talk about our, our street light, and also Brad, congratulations on your 35 years of service for the city of Sholo. Sorry I wasn't there last week, but congratulations and well done. Okay, next item on the agenda is scheduling of meetings.
The only meeting we'll mention is January 18th. You have a six o'clock budget study session. That's your next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda, executive session. I'll look for a motion to go into executive session. We'll discuss, consult for legal advice from our city attorney. Got a motion? I'll second it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Same sign. We will go into executive session. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.[1785.47]